Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting from March 2nd to order. Has the board had time to review the minutes of the last meeting? Did we get a motion on the minutes?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2024.
Did I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes. Five to zero. Minutes have approved. Chairman's update. At this time, I have no comments. Anyone have any questions? Hearing no questions. If Mr. Durkin is ready, we could move on to Consulting Engineers' report.
I think I'll be prepared when the items come up specifically. Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Riley, anything new?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing new at this time.
Nancy, do we have any new submissions this meeting?
We have something today for preliminary subdivision plan. Call is out of here.
Calls up? Okay. We have a few minutes. Get a motion to take a short recess.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll take a 10-minute recess. Let's call the meeting back into order. It's now 7:10. This is a public hearing. Anyone would like to get up and speak either far or against us, please state your name and address. As the time comes, please. The applicant here to present the board what they'd like.
This is Chase Bank.
This is on Chase Bank, yes.
Is there a spot that's best for this? I don't know if it's on camera. Right next to it.
Just state your name and then you.
Can I be in front of the mic? Will the mic still pick me up if I?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you. For the record, Nick DuHurst with Bowler Engineering, civil engineer on the project. So the site is 156-180 Main Street. It's a 16.6-acre parcel. It's currently comprised of two multi-tenant commercial buildings. The Stop &amp; Shop, floor and decor, and liquor store up here. And to the south is another multi-tenant building. There's Buffalo Wild Wings, Convenient MD, and then a few other uses in there. The site is located within the Business 2 zoning district and the Business Highway Subdistrict overlay. Site's bounded by Route 1 here to the east. North is the Auto Excellence Dealership. West is the apartments. And to the south is Square One Mall. The proposed project that we're here to talk about tonight is really isolated to the southerly portion of the site, so sort of in front of that Five Guys, Convenient MD building. Just to give you a little bit of background, sort of how we got here. Back in January, we had a DPRC meeting. We received written comments from different town staff and town departments. As part of the DPRC, we also spoke with the fire department. We received some comments from them that we actually worked through with them separately, so we agreed to sprinkler the building. So I believe we've come to an agreement with them as far as they're comfortable with access, and the sprinklers certainly help as well.
Do you have anything in writing that you'd suggest to the board?
So I'd have to check. I believe we do have an email from Chief Pelham. I'm sorry, Captain Pelham.
Phelan.
I'm sorry?
Phelan.
Captain Phelan.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I can double-check on that, and if we don't, I can reach out and see if he can give us. I don't know if that's part of the process, that when we file for planning board, if they would.
We didn't get anything from them, so.
Okay, gotcha. Yep.
Nancy, did you receive anything?
Yeah, and this conversation probably took place about a month and a half ago, so it's been a little bit since we last spoke with them. Yeah, I can, if we don't, I can.
I know there were some concerns at that meeting.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, one of their concerns, and not to go too far into the weeds, but was providing a designated fire lane. When we spoke with the captain, he ultimately told us that if we do agree to sprinkler the building, that that shouldn't be necessary, and that we do provide adequate access around the building for fire, so a designated fire lane wouldn't be required. We also, so we received, as I mentioned, we received comments from multiple town staff departments that we did respond to, and when we made our formal planning board filing, we included those comment response letters. We actually, earlier today, received comments to our responses from Larry that we'll review and work through those comments with Larry. We also, we were in front of the board as selectmen for a special permit for the drive-through use back on April 16th, and we did get approval for that. So I'll just sort of walk you through the site here. So as I mentioned, the improvements are really isolated to that sort of southerly portion of the lot. The project area today is all pavement. Right now, it's really just all paved parking area. So we're really sort of taking up a handful of spaces and sort of plopping in this Chase Bank development. So it's a 3,245-square-foot Chase Bank with an associated drive-up ATM at the rear, sort of this bump out here. An important distinction is it's not a drive-through window, so there's no sort of teller activities. It's just kind of your standard ATM. And again, we did receive a special permit with board of selectmen for that. Adjacent to that drive-up ATM lane is a designated bypass lane, the full length of the ATM. So we do provide that, which, again, in our conversation with fire, they appreciated that. As far as parking, so the existing site today, as stands, provides 710 parking spaces. We're resulting, this development results in a net loss of 41 spaces, so brings that total down to 669 spaces. We did work through the zoning required parking calculations, breaking up each use throughout the parcel. And by zoning, the lot requires 609 spaces. Again, we're providing 669, so it is overparked still from a zoning standpoint.
One question while you're on that.
Yeah.
In that meeting, I had asked why the second restaurant wasn't included. Has there been any changes to those calculations?
Yeah, so when we did those calculations, it was sort of from a preliminary standpoint. We hadn't done a super-deep dive into all the uses, but we feel confident that we hit all those uses now. So we did include, it's like a juicy crab or something like that. So we included that along with the Buffalo Wild Wings. We're also providing a pretty robust lighting and landscaping design. We submitted a formal landscaping plan that calls out the different species and plantings that we are proposing. They're all native species. They're also sort of depicted here on the rendering, so you can see we're proposing a handful of trees, perennials, and different shrubs sort of throughout the development. As I mentioned, there will also be a handful of building-mounted and pole-mounted lights to keep the area secure.
Excuse me. What kind of trees? Are they trees that are going to be small or are they going to?
So I can flip to the landscape plan and tell you the specific species. Nothing crazy from a size standpoint. So they're.
Today, next to you.
The trees are dogwoods and red maples.
Okay.
Any Japanese knobweed? I'm sorry?
We have some we can give you.
Check every time.
Yeah.
We're also providing a trash enclosure. It's going to be screened on all sides by a six-foot-high CMU block wall. We're also proposing plantings around that as well to provide additional screening.
Is the trash receptacle still on that side?
Yeah.
At some point, did somebody ask Chris at the DPRC to have that relocated on the other side? Wasn't that a concern for somebody to have it on that side?
Yeah, this design is quite contrary to what I recommended, but I can get into that later, but that was one of the issues of the trash enclosure should be recessed out of the site, and certainly not in the main drive aisle the rest of the use.
That's what I was thinking. I thought at the DPRC that it had been recommended that it be flipped onto the backside.
Okay.
Am I recalling that correctly?
Yeah.
As far as utilities and stormwater, we are proposing new connections to the municipal and water infrastructure within the site, along with electric and telecommunications. The bank does not require gas service. It's actually all BRF mechanical systems, so there would be no gas to the building. We're proposing a new fire hydrant sort of in this area where the trash enclosure is currently proposed, as well as additional stormwater management improvements. We received, as I mentioned, Larry's comments. We did explore the possibility of providing some infiltration. Unfortunately, we are up against, there's ledge sort of around the entire area, three to four feet deep, so it certainly does provide some challenges from an infiltration standpoint. But we're, again, we're happy to work with Larry on satisfying his stormwater-related comments. We are, in our eyes, improving the stormwater condition just by, we're proposing an additional 3,100 square feet of pervious surfaces that don't exist today. It's sort of, as I mentioned, entirely paved today, so we are providing additional recharge and water quality volume through the increase in pervious surfaces. If there's anything else that y'all would like me to get into specifically, I'm happy to, or happy to take questions as well.
Have you notified the 86,000 pigeons that reside here right now?
There was a lot of butter notifications that went out.
There's a lot of pigeons, yeah.
I think it was over 300 or something.
Somebody must come and feed them, because they all go in that same, right near that bank is, yeah. Because it's odd that they would just go in the middle of that parking lot.
Sure, there's plenty of other parking.
Do you know where the trash pickup is?
About a block of chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But there's no tracks right there. Seagulls or pigeons?
Both. Seagulls are particularly smart.
Yeah.
That question, though. Who's, the ownership of the building?
Yes.
Who is that going to be?
So it would be a lease, so Chase would lease the building. The property owner, the current property owner, would still own the building.
How long would the lease run for?
So I can't speak to the specific terms of the lease. Typically, they're fairly long-term leases, 15, 20 years initially.
So is Chase actually going to put the bill pay for putting the building up?
Yeah, so I don't want to speak.
They're going to sublease the building. They're going to actually?
Oh, no, 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 certainly not.
Own the building.
Yeah, well, yeah, the landlord will still own the building. Chase actually does go in, though, and construct the building.
The landlord will own the building?
Yes.
Not Chase?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Chase will lease the building. Landlord will own the building.
Any idea as to what they're talking about as far as the lease is concerned?
No, I can't really speak to that.
Interesting for now.
As far as terms, length of?
No, just length.
Gotcha. Yeah, so we do a handful of these, and have done a handful of these Chases sort of throughout the area. From what we've seen, again, we're not involved in those lease discussions, but typical, I think they have terms up to like 30 years with different options scattered around, so it's not exactly a short-term play for Chase. They're sort of in it for the long haul, so.
Yeah, but 30 years is the standard ground lease for this type of use, assuming there's no compete clauses.
We do have long leases up on Route 1, like Tyler, that's a very long lease on that front.
Anything longer than that would have some riders in it, like no compete clauses. Yeah, it's all trading value, but 30 years is standard for this sort of standalone path to age.
Is the owner, is the, who is the actual owner?
I can take a look at, I have the application here, I believe.
Mr. Chair, I'm just getting some permits for, they're going to repay some of the areas, and so they're talking to you about to get the transfer permits for that, so I've been in contact with the Grossman company. I did, they say that was property manager.
You know, I actually don't have the formal application printed that lists the property owner for that specific entity, so I don't have that information right now.
The one, Mr. Owner, for the entire mall area up there?
Yes, it's all under, it's all one parcel under one ownership. Yep, nothing condominium. Yep, exactly.
Called NCTGCI, so I guess LLC. It's an LLC.
Can you say that acronym again?
NC, TGCI, so I guess LLC.
Actually, Grossman, it might be a Grossman LLC. That does sound familiar.
Let's get it ordered in Quincy.
Yeah, Grossman's out of Quincy, so that would.
So it's an LLC?
Yeah, they usually are.
Gene, it's on page. It's, did you pack it tonight? It's right here at the top.
Oh, okay. I don't have that one, do I? Would you pack it?
The.
Okay. Yep, I have it. Nope, this is a second one. I don't have that. So we'll need to pick a peer review consultant as well tonight?
It's got the.
Correct?
Yeah, I think that's one of the tasks for the board.
So it's in your hands.
However, you'd like to proceed, but you know Larry has a review.
Yeah, I'd like to, Mr. Chair, at some point, I'd like to just bring up a few items.
Would you like to continue with the engineer, please, comments? Mr. Durkin, if you would, please.
Please. Well, yes, Nick and I, we've, I think we've communicated fairly well so far. I think part of my DPRC response was a pretty detailed checklist, and the comments have been good. I think, you know, my first concern is, I'll tell you, is with the drainage plan. Normally, single-family homes, they're doing water infiltration. Even Food Service, that's coming on the line pretty soon. That was a rehab, but they added, and they've got ledge right there. So I think we can discuss that. Yeah, I'd like to see borries, you know, to show the borries on your plan. I'd like to see the logs, and, you know, we're just getting more and more rains.
Yeah, absolutely.
And everything essentially ends up in this town, it's like this waterway, shoot brooker. So I think it'd be, you know, there's a ton of asphalt there, so I'd like to work with you on that. I think looking at the plan, just verifying existing utilities, just for, you know, the board's information, the DPW, it's all really private water services. It's like, it's kind of like a dead-end line that goes in and serves the development. And so they view it as a long service.
How is that a dead end?
It dead ends. It doesn't loop through.
Doesn't loop?
No.
The water, correct?
The water doesn't. And so I think, so I think one of the things that, we just want to, you know, I can see where you're getting the water, but I think you're going to need to just verify that.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think even, it's good to see that you've, you know, you've found the sewer. The sewer's right there. It's close. We were worried that they're going to have to go up to Route 1 to get to it, and so I think it's a private site, but normally, I think it's always good to camera between where you connect to both the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer, just to see the condition, and then just to see it, and then just to verify after construction. You mentioned an altar survey, but I think it's always good to, where you really need to know it. You know, I think at 799 Broadway, they're getting ready, same engineering firm, they're getting ready to come for building permits, and they're working closely there, and they've done some vacuum excavations, really to get to the pipe, to see what the size is and the material is and the condition, so I think.
Yeah, so, and I, just to speak to that briefly, and less on the condition, but the actual locations that are sort of mapped on our plans. For all of Chase's sites, when they do the initial survey, they include, it's called SUE, Subsurface Utility Exploration. What that is, there's different levels to it, but what we've been doing is GPR, Ground Penetrating Radar. So a typical altar survey would pick up utilities based off dig save markings and, you know, manholes, valves, as well as, you know, any record information that the jurisdiction has, which we did do here, but they also go out and confirm it with that GPR. So we are confident in the locations of the utilities, but to your point, GPR, of course, doesn't tell you the condition of it, so.
I think it's mostly where you're connecting, and it's private utilities, so. So I think, you know, you just got to look for that. I think one of the things that I'm asking for is, just like similar we had at 799, there were some environmental concerns, so one of the things I'm asking for is an applicant to have an LSP to perform a mass DEP, environmental record searches in a half-mile. It's pretty easy to do. And just identify, you know, summarize the results in a, you know, in a letter to the planning board. You know, I know the Bowler, 799, they provided this, so it may not be anything. I mean, I know how to do the search myself. It's not too bad, but I think, you know, let's, I think it's just a good exercise to go through. And then traffic, I think, you know, I said this may be at the discretion, discussion, you know, with the peer, who typically helps a lot with traffic engineering. And I think my concern is, as even coming here, I was texting the chair that, you know, I've never seen the traffic like that at Main Street and Lynn Phelps Parkway. And I'm not here on the weekends, but I just hear that everyone really complains about the traffic. So where a lot of the tie-in, you know, I'm not saying it's not really my requirement, but I think it's something the board might be interested in, might want to have the peer look at.
Yeah.
I'm getting up to speed with mass DEP permitting and where their right-of-way is. And so I think the interchange that, from that shopping mall, is in there, and that's one of the areas that Grossman is looking to pave this summer. So I'll have more information there. So I think that's something for the board to consider.
Yeah, and just to briefly speak on traffic, because we didn't provide any specific traffic study or assessment or trip generation memo. What we've seen on these Chase Banks, and really bank developments entirely, is they really aren't big traffic generators at all. Essentially, the way the bank views them, I mean, I'm sure you all know that, you know, baking at an actual brick-and-mortar is kind of an antiquated thing at this point. So these banks, they're really more for, you know, kind of to plant a flag in a town or sort of a big billboard. So when we have prepared traffic memos in the past for developments like this, they, the results that they produce are typically very minimal trips that we wouldn't anticipate in a shopping plaza like this to really have any adverse impacts on the intersections or surrounding roadways, really at all. But again, that's, it's entirely, you know, your discretion as to what's required from a traffic standpoint.
And initially, I think you guys didn't want to put a hydrant in, so I'm glad, I'm glad that's changed. You know, I think the hydrant's also additional fire protection. And if there's a water quality issue with it all being a dead end, you want to be able to flush.
Sure.
So I think one of the things I've talked about, and I think one of my concerns is, I'd really like you to get out there, there's a, you know, Wild Wings, there's a hydrant there.
Yep.
I'd really, I'd like you to flow test it before the next design submission. One of my concerns is because that's a long dead end, you know, and all the water surfaces on the rear of the properties, you know, it may, if the flow isn't that strong, you may have to loop back through to where the water comes in on that side of property. And if we do that, then the town will probably have to have a hydraulic modeling, you know, assessment done to view that. But, you know, we just got to see how that works out. And I think the other thing is if you do your camera work on the drains and sewer before the next submission, then you're going to know the condition. You know, ideally, you don't want to do improvements, but my lesson on those lines is, you know, it's cheap work to camera it now, and it's just going to give you a lot of information. You don't want trouble.
Sure, absolutely.
Down the road. And this is a new, we don't do infiltration inflow permits with whole, single-family homes, and this isn't a huge generation, but I think just going to have to get some flow information from you.
Yeah.
And the infiltration inflow permit comes further down the road.
Sure.
But I think, you know, let's generate that and, you know, come to agreement.
And is that just, is that just calculated from Title V?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can get you those calculations.
And I can get you the form, and it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's not going to be a big fee like it is for a place with a lot of housing units, but. And then, excuse me, I've had a, just to not end up, look at the plans, you know, and I just, my, so my quick look is, you know, one of my suggestions, some of the town-specific requirements, like burial depths and curb stops, valves turn this way, valves open that way. You've got a huge note sheet, and, you know, and I've got new glasses and 2010 with them, but I think I didn't see a lot of the notes that are in my checklist on the plans.
So to be candid, those notes are more sort of, that general note sheet, that's included on every Bowler plan set, so it's, you're not going to see any jurisdictional specific notes in there. We did pick up a lot of those items on our construction details, which are the sheets towards the end of the set. Specifically, we actually took, from 799, we took the details that were approved by your office and transferred those right onto our plans, so. They should be far along, but again, if you have any comments.
No, that's just checking the list.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And so that's all good, and I, so I think, you know, those are my concerns.
Yeah, and we would, again, and I'll reach out to you separately offline about this, but we're hoping maybe sometime next week, we can sort of catch up and just sort of run through specifics on a handful of these comments, just to make sure we're on the same page.
And I think, I did meet with the DPW and the Water Foreman today, and I think, I was just giving them the big picture, but I, now that we have this plan, and I've heard from you, so I think my goal is to, I'm going to present it to the DPW in detail at our next meeting, which should be next Thursday.
Great.
And then, yeah, and then we can go from there.
Awesome.
Questions from the board? Mr. Long?
A question to Larry. Did you say that why it's looped up there?
No, no, it's not looped.
Would, are any of the buildings up there new water lines?
I think if you get an overall plan, you must have it.
If you see, so this is our utility plan, so this is the Convenient MD Buffalo Wild Wing building. So the nearest water supply for us is actually this, around where this hydrant is, right here. So this is sort of that connecting driveway to the Square One Mall right here, so it's just off of that. So this is sort of that connecting driveway to the Square One Mall right here, so it's just off of that. The floor and decor building, there's a water main sort of outback that that connects to that runs that way.
It runs up to Main Street, so it runs behind the buildings.
Yep. And as far as we know, the water line for this building ties into this general area as well, so.
Your line would be tied in where?
So we're proposing it running all the way over there, because really, that's the closest water supply to, to the area.
And I think we, we probably will ask to do a modeling exercise. You know, right now, you're showing a six inch, and the balance is, you don't want too big of a pipe, because you don't want, you're concerned with water age, but you also want to make fire flow.
Yep.
So, so I think, you know, if, if, we just gotta see, think how it'll go. I mean, they could loop through there to back to the tie-in where they come off Main Street. And that, but we have to look at the modeling to see.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful when we have further discussions with the Water Department to get their thoughts on.
So you mentioned sprinkler for the building? It's all coming off that six-inch line?
Yeah, so right now, and again, we understand this will need to be further coordinated with the Water Department. We're showing a single six-inch line with the domestic tapping off of that line outside of the building.
Is that line going under that road?
Yeah, so it's really just a long trench in the main driveway. Yep, correct.
You know, I'm your conduit to the Water Department, so I, yeah, so.
Beautiful.
But I think, you know, if we need to at some point, you know, we can do a conference call.
I, yeah, I think that would be great, absolutely.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Larry?
Sure, thank you, three years of the board. I'm gonna stand up and just put this on the TV here. And plan where I'm right up, and sort of pass around the folks, so they can see what I'm talking about, if anyone's interested. So in the DPRC, we saw something in the initial concept that looked a lot like this. And my recommendation was consistent with the design standards in our Business Highway District Sustainability Bylaw. You want to have this type of isolated building pad in more proximity to the existing building footprints. So I recommended you move this whole footprint over and reorient it about ninety degrees, so it looks like it's a stem and it comes off the existing buildings. That just adds more continuity, it flows on the site better, it makes the traffic and circulation better, and makes it safer for pedestrians. I don't see any of that here, in fact, it's sort of, you know, moves in the opposite direction. This here, the trash enclosure, we've talked about that, that obviously is a non-starter, because you can't have something like that going into such a high-volume, high-speed.
And that is high-volume.
It's like Circus Maximus in downtown Rome, if you've been there. Where Ben Hur and Grace Jarrett's coming through here. There's a stop sign here that everybody blows through, and so this whole thing is a high-speed nightmare. We can't ask the police to enforce that. So what could you do with design standards, you could fix a lot of that. And you would do that by shifting the building over here, pulling the traffic and the circulation for that use over here, making it more continuous with the existing buildings, making it easier for pedestrians to get out of their cars once they've parked in proximity to any of the uses and move from one use to the other. It's all in our design standards and the zoning bylaws.
So if I'm correct, if I may, you had proposed this in the DCPI, but we have seen no changes or?
There was a response, and the client doesn't want to do that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that briefly, so.
If I'm not done, if I can just finish my comments? And so the other thing I mentioned in that meeting, John, you were there, we talked about this, was the need for a traffic study, and more than just a traffic memo. And it's, it's something that needs to be peer reviewed. We can take an applicant's assurance, we've done these all over the place. Well, this is a different location with, I would say, a higher order of traffic impact, existing traffic impact, and this is gonna interact with that. And so we need a traffic study that can be peer reviewed by our peer review consultant. So that should be added, and, and, you know, obviously, my comments relate to maybe an architectural review. This is a welcome investment and a good use for this project, and we welcome that always in Saugus, right? But it's a service for local residents that they'll enjoy. But that shouldn't be at the expense of a bad design. So, you know, if we can't see movement with the building pad in closer proximity to this, we need to see a continuous pedestrian connection that they've really enabled here by their design, straight across here. And if the Fire Department no longer needs a fire lane all the way around the building, because it's sprinkled, there's no reason why we can't close this off and make this a continuous pedestrian connection. It's much safer for pedestrians to move from their parking in this area back and forth, which is what they're likely to do. So those would be my comments at this time for that. Now, I'll just share this with the board, what I'm talking about. This area right here would be a continuous pedestrian corridor that would have blocked off the area to protect people moving back and forth. It would not be accessible traffic through here.
Here, this would be an existing sidewalk, but everything from here over would be blocked off so that cars could not interact with the pedestrians in those areas.
Isn't there a new building at the end of that one, though?
This is the Wild Wings here, and then here's the MD Place.
That's the MD Place.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I think.
The MD is the impact of that.
The town is down closer to Union.
So if they're not gonna move it over here, which is what I was recommending with this, if we can't get movement.
How would you access the bank here from that street?
There's no access.
So this is, this is a sidewalk with pedestrian access all the way around the building.
Okay.
So anybody that can come this way can connect to the sidewalks and walk all the way around the building. And then it connects over here to these parking spaces. I wouldn't recommend that, but in any case, you know, you're, what you're looking for is this use closer to this, in a more continuous and holistic treatment, consistent with our design standards in our existing bylaws. Because we don't have that right now, but that's what I recommend.
Can you speak to?
Yeah, so, so just to speak to the layout thing, and I certainly appreciate that comment and respect it, absolutely. And basically, what we spelled out in our response letter to that is, so when we get approached with these projects from Chase, they spend, you know, months sort of researching and working through designs and layouts with, you know, people that, that we don't really have any, any communications with, including the landlord directly. So they basically feed us a site plan, a layout, that they've, you know, studied versus other alterca- alternatives to that layout. And basically, that's what they feed us and tell us that that's, you know, their preferred design and layout of the site. We did go back to the Chase team and we actually shared a concept plan with them rotating the building, per Chris's comment, and they said that, that it was their preference to move forward with, with the design as is. So we, you know, we did breach them with that, that idea, and they, they turned it down and they, you know, they said that they've studied this site and that's what works best from their, from their perspective as far as circulation and, and access to the building. Again, totally appreciate the comment and, and understand it.
So would you be kind enough to explain to the board traffic, traffic flow from your point? Because I know of two entrances to that lot, and it's not close to either one.
Yeah, well, I think they're mostly just, I think they're considering the flow from here being a little more continuous to these front parking spaces, as opposed to if we rotate it, it kind of eats up to a handful of parking here, and it would require us to kind of realign some of these drive aisles. So basically, we're maintaining this drive aisle, this drive aisle, and this drive aisle. If we rotate things, it doesn't allow us to maintain all those drive aisles, and things would be staggered. So you'd sort of have a drive aisle that kind of loops around and it gets a little wonky from a layout perspective. So that's why Chase ultimately made the decision that, in their mind, it's, it works best from a, a traffic circulation standpoint.
Well, I definitely don't agree with the trash receptacle there, up against that main drive.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. I'm sure we can find another, I don't know if there's a specific.
That was asked on the meetings.
What about that? Chris, where would you think it should go, in that corner right here where you were saying to block that?
Yeah, I think you're thinking of.
Flipping it on the opposite side, right?
That triangle in the rear there?
Yeah.
Move next to the elevation of the building, south elevation of the building?
I'm gonna take this one.
That sidewalk area in there.
And through here?
Nope.
This pocket area.
Move over to the right. That area in there. Looks like a big sidewalk that doesn't need to be that big, and it could probably be designed to, still a lot of pedestrian access and occasional trash.
Yep. Yeah, I think.
Might lose one spot, but.
Yeah, I, I think from, from Chase's perspective, I think their concern there would be that it would sort of block the, the view of the building from Route One.
Is Chase saying that they will not move that?
No, I, so, to be totally honest, I, I can't speak specifically to if that conversation's been had, but in my experience with them, I'm sure if we, if we give them alternative areas, they'll, they'll be happy to move it if they, if they know that's a requirement, so. I'm just saying, I think upfront, here, they.
That's always a concern, is the visibility from the main corridor, right, obviously?
It is the main corridor.
But their design actually is counter to that, because it provides a thin sliver from the very highway where they want maximum exposure.
Yeah, this is.
We don't really don't want trash enclosures facing Route One, but ideally, you know, in a mall, that would be the appropriate place on the outside of where people are circulating, so the impact is reduced.
But you're right, then that's what you'll see from the. Sure.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at other areas and.
So Chris, where are you thinking it should go? Because you're right, you do want to look at that from the highway, right, because that's what you would see.
Yeah, I would, you know, I can see a place right here.
Right down there.
Okay, so here's, here's the traffic over here. Here's the, the view.
Yeah.
Uh, envelope in here, and they're, and they're kind of moving by. You could put one over here and screen it right here and have access in there, and you'd still have pretty good visibility going by on both north and south lanes. So it wouldn't be a tough sell.
Would, would.
What about in that, no?
Would somewhere maybe along here be an option?
Anywhere, if I may, to the board, anywhere, you know, where there's likely to be pedestrian and traffic circulation mixing is a bad idea to put services.
What about that top corner where you have like four spots with all the trees? What if you tucked it in over there?
Yeah, maybe like rotated something like that, or?
Yes, so it's not right up against that line and it's kind of blocked by those.
Yep, that, that's definitely an option, yep.
And it's gonna be completely fenced in anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, and to be, to be candid, as I'm sure you can imagine, these banks are very big trash generators. So the trash gets picked up as needed, which I think sometimes can be multiple weeks, so it's not like you're getting dumpster pickup, you know, daily or by daily or anything like that, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely take, take a closer look at that, and I, I kind of like your idea of somewhere up here, but if anybody else has any other thoughts, we're happy to consider that as well. And, and like I mentioned earlier, we are overparked here, so I can't imagine there would be an issue with, you know, losing a handful of additional spaces to relocate that, that enclosure.
What do you think about that, Chris?
Yeah, that, that would work. Anytime you put trash enclosures sort of off the building perimeter or off-site, they aren't maintained nearly as well. And then people start dumping, and it becomes more of a, I mean, it's a security issue, but it's, you know, we certainly have those type of layouts up and down Route One.
It just seems like no matter what's, if you put it up against that building, no matter what side, it's gonna be looking at it from, unless it was on that side, as you just said. That's the restaurant side, but.
Yeah, you could, there's treatments, you know, you could make it blend into the architecture of the building. There are ways you can do that easily now, but.
Correct.
And the CMU sort of does, it, it does kind of achieve that. It's a similar sort of color and texture to the building. So it is a, you know, it's a dressed-up trash enclosure that looks, looks, you know, pretty nice.
Okay. All right, so then we need to pick an APR review consultant?
Yeah, so your choices are tech for tech, which we've used pretty much consistently, and Beta is now on board too. Beta is the peer reviewer, if you don't know, for the CONCON. And that's not involved here, but, so they're familiar with our regulations and the town and our procedures and staff. So we could try that. Go with that, ten thousand dollars.
Spice it up a little.
For the tra- what I suggest or recommend to the board, traffic, normal zoning, and entitlement review. And maybe comment on the architecture of the site layout.
Traffic, did you see traffic?
I did.
So just a question on the traffic piece. So, yeah, I, yeah, so we haven't submitted any sort of, of traffic study. Would it be an option to sort of ask Beta to opine on that prior to us contracting with somebody and preparing that? And get their opinion if a traffic study is required?
We would still have to do our own review.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay. So, so a traffic study will be required here? Is there a level of, just because I know, you know, there's assessment, study, trip chat, you know, there's a handful of different.
We're gonna have a site visit with the, this whole area marked, I was up there today, and there's two sections of parking that are gonna go away with this building. By the way, this plan's a little different than what we're looking at right there, slightly different, but similar. But anyway, I think we need to go there to see where from the roadway that crosses, that crosses the property, coming up from Macy's, back down to the care place there, convenient care. Have that part of the parking lot locked off, I'm just doing it with cones or something like that, so that we can visually see what it looks like. Nothing expensive, just a site visit to know where we start from there.
Sounds good to me. Want to make a motion now on the site visit?
We need, want to make the.
If you'd like to, Mr. Long?
Yeah, I remember that we continue the hearing and that we have a site visit going on.
This is a public hearing, so before we, we need to see if the audience would like to get up and speak.
Oh, yeah, I'm not closing up the, not closing up the public hearing.
No, okay. Board members, can I get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Specific time?
I'm retired.
There you are.
Tonight? After the meeting?
Isn't there a Bruins game on?
At eight o'clock.
We'll go to Dunkin' Donuts for coffee afterwards, they'll pay.
So when would you like to do a site?
Let's go to everybody.
Because I'd like it laid out, at least the four corners of the bank.
Yeah, I think cones would probably make sense. I could bring some cones and.
Yep.
Just drop them off.
Luckily, the, the parking spaces, the existing parking spaces give sort of good reference points of where.
In person, I think you're actually taking more parking than what we're visually can relate to here on that. If you get, you know, when you get up there, you can see the greater extent of the building in the, in the project itself.
Gotcha.
Once you're there on site.
Yeah.
But nothing expensive, you know, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Orange cones.
Yep. Yeah, the lot was, was surveyed, so we're, yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, we are confident that the number of parking spaces that we're proposing to remove and replace is accurate from what, you know, assuming nothing's changed on site that we're not aware of since the survey was done.
It's a good time.
But, yeah, absolutely.
It was a good time for a site visit, you want to do direct traffic?
Mr. Chairman, what would be convenient for Sagemo?
Saturday morning?
After you guys get finished work? I'm sorry about that.
No, you're not.
Saturday morning's pancake, boy, what are you talking about?
Saturday morning, you just have to go easy on it, just.
What's that?
Are you available on Saturday mornings?
This Saturday or?
Would you do it this Saturday?
Early.
I'm great.
Yep.
Early? Keep it early?
You available?
Really like to crack it on, what time to get up? I'm up at four, even on Saturday.
Don't call me.
I am gonna start calling.
I tell you what.
I think we should do it on this Saturday.
On three, two.
About ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock this Saturday?
Can we do, what's early, what do you want to do? Nine, eight thirty? I don't know, Saturday, I have like a million things, I'm putting a new form on Saturday. So it's gotta be early.
Ten or nine?
Nine.
Eight?
People do nine, eight, eight's good.
I mean, it's up to you guys.
Eight AM Saturday.
Eight AM Saturday.
Eight AM Sunday?
So.
All favor of eight AM?
Yes.
Eight AM Saturday morning? Mr. Riley, if you'd like to attend?
So just. Just to clarify on the site visit, so do we need to be there to lay things out?
Yes, we need it laid out.
Okay.
Some of you.
So I personally can't do Saturday. I have commitments this whole weekend, unfortunately. I just don't want to make a commit, I could see if someone else from our office would be able to help, but I just can't commit to that, unfortunately.
Okay.
And that being for what, two weeks after?
Two weeks, a week.
Could you drop cones on Friday?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
I could, I just, I can't guarantee that they would stay there. To be totally honest, I mean, and I don't want, I don't want to deflect this onto anybody. Like I said, I think if, based off of the existing parking spaces, I think you could get a good feel for where the building lies just based off of the existing parking field. But if you disagree, we're happy to either, you know, try our best to make arrangements for this Saturday or.
The thing that's good about getting there is that you're taking two parking areas and with the building in there, you now have the barrel parking coming with cars backing out. I think we need to see what that would look like.
Okay.
On that.
Yeah, I mean, we do provide dimensions on the plan that show that meets the drive aisle widths of 24 feet, but.
This is a property, and you could just give them instruction to place the cones if you can make it.
Yeah, we, so we don't have, Bowler, we work for Chase, so we don't have communication with the landlord, but I can see what we can do. I apologize for complicating things.
Move with the.
Well, we're not in a big hurry either, could we do it the following week?
Anytime you want.
The following Saturday?
Yeah, I can see if I can move some things around.
One suggestion is, you know, maybe mark the corners.
With spray paint or?
With some white paint.
Yeah.
And then, and then anyone can put cones.
That's a good idea.
I think that's probably what we will do.
Yeah.
All right, so why don't you let us know when you can have that done?
Okay.
And then send an email to Mr. Riley, and then you can just let us know, and then we can coordinate that. We don't have to pick a date in time right now.
Okay.
When you get that done.
Good.
And so I've also voted on the peer review, I think, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's an item and then, and then we can.
I didn't work it.
Motion to continue to the next meeting. And just go with Larry and those.
Yeah, so, and I, you know, you guys know the process much better than I. So we'll get peer review comments from this point, we have some things to work through with Larry, so I don't think we would expect to be continued to the next hearing.
Right.
So to your point, I think we have plenty of time. I would imagine we'd want to hear from the peer reviewer and have a chance to address their comments prior to the next meeting, just to be able to have a public, or a productive meeting. So I don't, maybe it's even two or three meetings from now, I don't know what Beta's timeframe typically is, but.
Yeah, we've got to get everything, all the paperwork.
Take a motion first.
Yeah.
Motion for Beta's peer reviewer for typical zoning entitlement, standard review, traffic. And I can give you a copy of what the board has looked at before, if that's the pleasure of the board. So he's a model.
Oh, that would be very helpful, yeah.
The limit of, you know, the study and so forth. And that may be an architectural, you know, site layout design.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will go with Beta as a peer review consultant?
With the amount of, which is a 10,000?
The amount of $10,000.
Yep, yeah, we'll get you guys a check.
Okay, and you'll coordinate through Mr. Riley?
Yep, does the check go to you guys or to Beta first, or?
It goes to the town, it goes up to the town, so I guess, goes into a 53G account.
Gotcha.
And then you win, the peer reviewer invoices us, so we're controlled.
Okay.
Mr. Durkin?
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that that I get a cost from the hydraulic modeler that the DPW uses, and I get a cost that's, I think, without such a long run, and, you know, we're looking for the hydro flow test data soon, I think it'd best to do that effort now, so.
Would you put that in a written request and give that to Mr. Riley?
I will do that.
This way when he sign, you had to sign the contract?
Beta and just have.
Okay.
I, the DPW might want to use the person that's more familiar with the model.
How does that work? Does that, is that up to the applicant to pick who they want?
I mean, it could be.
Usually they do their own thing, with their own consultant, so to start to, you know, to pleasure the board, but.
You'll have a report from the planning board?
What's that?
I'd rather have the peer review work directly from the planning board, separate of the DPW.
No, but the applicant should pick who they want to do that work, right?
No.
No.
No, not the tech, not the peer review, I'm talking about the, what Larry's talking about.
Yeah, they would.
The water report.
They would submit the information, the monitoring for it, and then it would be reviewed, portioned out by peer review, whether it's water or utilities or whoever they use.
Architectural.
Princess Latara here with Stan Tech, and, you know, whoever they use, I think it was, is it CDM?
It used to be CDM, but I think the DPW's using another consultant, so I'd have to ask the DPW director on that.
Yeah, those guys have authority to do that under their regulations.
Okay.
So they can do that and keep the peer review.
Well, it should be a cost that paid by the applicant.
DPW will work that out with the applicant.
Well, I can work it out with the applicant and, you know, talk to the DPW. I think what I suggested, that Mr. Chair is, is let me get a cost proposal for the DPW's water system consultant to, for modeling. And this is stuff that's been done on other projects, and the applicant funds it.
Yeah, that's normally the DPW's jurisdiction and their authority, suppose the planning board under zoning, site plan review in this case. So that's why the separation makes sense, you know.
No, I was just asking, what I was looking for clarification was, is that something that they, that the DPW picks who they're gonna use, not the applicant judge and choose who they're gonna use? Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, they, they manage the peer review.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to do further look at that pedestrian walkway that Mr. Riley spoke about. Like to see how Chase feels about that, pursue that capacity.
Is it possible to get like a scanned version of that, where I can even just take a picture of it or?
Yeah, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'll scan it and send it to them, and then they can.
That would be very helpful, yeah.
Work it through.
Do you want me to take it and scan it for you and?
Yeah, that'd be great, Larry.
I'll do that now.
Okay.
And then I'll return if it's the original to you.
Did there was a public hearing, anyone in the audience like to speak in favor or against? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to continue the public hearing to, what do you think is a good date? June, June 6th or June?
So you said the next one's the 23rd, 24th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Two weeks from today.
May 16th is our next one, and then we meet June 6th or June 20th?
So, I mean, I think I would defer to you guys, so is it productive if we, you know, come back without having any peer review comments or have a chance to address them? I would say no.
No, so probably June 20th?
Yeah, and if we're preparing, you know, a traffic study, that will take some time as well, so.
Okay.
Was that June 20th?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to.
Done some flow testing and looked at the modeling.
Yeah, that'll give us some time to dig a little deeper on the utility stuff, so.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to continue the public hearing for Chase Bank to June 20th.
Can I get a second?
Little second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time. And if we do get to the point where June 20th approaches and we still really aren't at that point, is it as simple as just continue requesting a continuance? Okay, awesome. I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
You just have a form, you just write, she'll send you the form, you just fill it out and say you want to continue it.
So we'll advise you on whether we need a continuance and an extension.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Sorry. Next.
Now comes time for 7:30, River Crest Circle, 80 Winter Street, definitive subdivision approval extension. Mr. Bork?
Hello. William Bork, 26 Gunning Street, Beverly, Mass. I'm looking to renew the permit for River Crest Circle so we can file for getting the road accepted.
Are there any questions from the board members?
Are there additional lots left to be?
There's one left.
One left?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any plans to develop that one lot? No?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Loh?
What's the required frontage over there? On East Side River, what?
Hundred foot, hundred foot, yeah.
Can you, on this piece here, can you tell me where that line is?
Which one?
The last one that's unveiled.
The last one is, it's lot two, it's this one here. It's lot two. You see the frontage?
Okay, so. So that building that's, that's there or?
That is there, yeah.
Oh, okay, so. You're gonna, yeah, so you're gonna put a house back here someplace.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, it's in between the two, set back just a little.
Enough frontage right in the circle, so. Make it really accessible.
Right, right, it's been, there is a design on it through conservation.
So. What, these buildings, what is, who owns those things?
They're sold, they are sold.
Oh, I mean, they're just. What are they? I saw the nice garden, I followed up on.
Yeah, well, that's Winter Street, right, that is 80, Winter owns that garden, yeah. His lot goes all the way back down to the river, that is Alan's garden.
Mr. Durkin, have you had a chance to go out there and inspect anything?
Yes, I have, and I, you know, I've done an inspection, I've met Art and Dwyer, they made some other payments, the Asbourn.
They're pretty close, we're just about close there, pretty close.
I think what's, there's a few, it's in the, I summarized it in the report, I didn't think we were really gonna discuss it, but I, I think, you know, I just need the water tie cards for each of the residents and to go in the town's geographic information system. There's a stormwater infiltration system, and what seems to be installed is different than what's on the design plans. I actually talked to the engineer, Rip Salvo, yesterday, and Art and Dwyer, I called David Dwyer, he was on vacation on the 14th T, but he did take my call, and so they're gonna get me a letter, because if it's different than the design, I need to know that it's gonna still do the effect. So I'm waiting for that. There's a sidewalk issue, the definitive plan, number 34, it says the applicant will make repairs to the concrete sidewalk along Winter Street from the West League Lot Line, 96 Winter Street, to the East League Lot Line of 84 Winter Street, at 84 Winter Street, so, and and need, as needed and determined by the DPW. So I think, I think what I've noticed is the sidewalk is five feet wide, but it's sloped, it's sloped from the interior side to the road through a portion, it's about five inches, so it's, so I'm trying to get, the DPW brought it to their attention long, you know, month or more ago, and they just gotta give me what their recommendation is. I think if you, if you get back to the driveway at 94, it's pretty in good shape.
Right, right, it's just in front of.
It's just in front of there.
That lot, lot four, right in front of lot four.
Yeah, so I think it's.
We're waiting for the DPW to respond on that, which, you know, we went over like last month, so.
Yeah, I showed them pictures and I think they've been out there, so I, I'll, I think I have two meetings with them next week, so I'll. I think David Dwyer says he's planning to come on, you know, the first step is.
To get it renewed, and then we want to go for the Asbourn.
Generally, I, it's, everything's in.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Was the change to the infiltration system ever documented? Has data come back before the planning board?
No, there was no change, there was no change, there's no change in that, there was no change. It's just, the only change, I think, was that you were talking about was the clean out. That was, there was no change, so it's just a matter of a manhole, right?
The design shows some manhole covers, and I think they're for cleaning out, and I don't see the manhole covers in the circle.
Okay, who would be responsible for that infiltration? Is it the, yourself, or is it, that's part of the subdivision, you're gonna churn that over to the town?
No, it's part of the subdivision, so.
Part of the subdivision.
So the owners will have an association, there are responsible for that.
Have you prepared anything such?
I think my lawyer, my lawyer has drawn all that up, so that should be all.
I have all the documents.
You know, I mean, so that's not a concern for the town because they're responsible for it anyways.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think one concern the DPW director mentioned to me is a possibility of either cambering the sewer before it comes over to the town, and that, you know, maybe cambering, what, what, there's a connection to the sewer that's getting turned over to the town. So I can look more closely at it and talk with David or talk with you.
Yeah, yeah, because we've, you know, we popped all the manhole covers and got the depths and everything else on that.
I think if the town's gonna accept it, it may be worth a.
So we have, we have time to review that, so basically, Larry, we're here for.
We're just for renewal right now, and then, yeah, you know, I mean, I know what David was saying for the next meeting, or is he thinking two meetings away?
I'm not sure, he was on the 14th T.
Right, you know, so.
I think once.
Can I get a motion from?
Yeah, we get, that's what we are concerned, just get it renewed, and then we'll either the next meeting or two meetings away.
Okay.
Can I get a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to extend the.
Get a second?
He didn't finish.
I thought he did, sorry.
To grant an extension for the.
Definitive subdivision.
Subdivision of River Crest Circle. Mr. Chair, may I recommend a little additional language? For a period of one year to satisfy the comments made in the engineering memo dated blah, blah, submitted to the planning board.
So the extension would be good for one year?
Yes.
Okay, I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, hopefully I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
You'll file that with Lansing?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Should I file that now or no?
If you, anytime you're open.
Okay, thank you.
Should it be a publication?
Is it publicated?
Right, next.
How fast time for the next hearing? It's a continued public hearing on Hawks Hill Lane, 223 Wallace Street, definitive subdivision approval extension.
Mr. Chair, this is the opening of a public hearing.
Excuse me, sir?
The, the request on the agenda is for a public hearing for an extension request.
Extension request?
Yeah, we haven't dealt with that before on this.
That's just what, how it says it on the agenda, that's why.
Yeah, okay, but, either way, okay.
Thank you for clarification.
The applicant?
Hi, Fabio, where are you, from two twenty-three Walnut Street? So, yeah, I don't know much about what you say, I, I just wanna see if I can get that extension or not. I, I, I don't, I'm not really prepared, I don't, I don't know what you say, I just sent all the, I think.
So what the board is looking for is, is to unifile for a, um, an extension of the subdivision that's already in place. There's been a change of ownership?
No.
Who owns the subdivision?
Oh, you, you, what was the question again?
Who owns the subdivision at this time?
Right now?
Yeah.
Uh, I think the change, I think you guys mentioned, uh, he's still under, uh, James, Hawk, whatever, I suppose should be the one.
We don't know who's got it, you've, you've pulled all the permits for the two houses.
Yeah, yeah, it's me, it's me, yeah.
Who owns the subdivision?
Yeah, it's supposed to be me, I, I thought you were saying, uh, was the, the, the.
No.
The previous owner, yeah.
So you purchased the subdivision, but it was never been changed and recorded?
Yep. I actually didn't know that I had it to go in front of the, the, the planning, so I, I applied for all the permits, uh, as I mentioned last time. I went through the whole process, had, uh, permissions for everything, I was never guided by nobody saying, uh, your plans are hold.
Well, nobody knew, that's, that's the reason why.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that, that, that's why, either me, so why I, that's why I, I never did it.
I think the last time that Mr. Hawks was here was in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
Yeah, there was an extension granted.
At that time?
For one year, I believe, two thousand five.
Yeah, probably when I bought it, I bought it, uh, on, uh, two thousand twenty.
It appears that he has sold it off to you and he has vacated the town of Sagas.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah, and don't you mind.
We need this recorded?
Yes, you need to take the, the plan, even though somebody else submitted it to the board, you need to take that to the Registry of Deeds and have it recorded.
Okay.
Plan you have, the definitive subdivision plan that you bought from Mr. Hawks, that needs to be recorded at the Registry ASAP.
Okay.
Otherwise you're gonna continue to have a lot of trouble.
If Mr. Hawks is the one that applied for the subdivision and then it just expired and then he sold it, how would it just continue over to the new one?
Well, it's, uh, you know, subdivision, definitive subdivision plans run with the land, but obviously the local regulations apply to them, so if they expire, you, the board has two choices, when presented with, we wanna continue with the building permits, you don't have a valid subdivision plan. Either you need to come in and submit a whole new process, a new filing, or you need to get an extension for this one and build what was approved. So he's still obligated to build what was approved, if he's.
That's correct.
Building, buildings under the existing plan.
So do we have those plans, was there two houses on those, uh, original plans filed? I thought it was only one house that was on.
Three, originally, two thousand and five.
Yeah, it was only, the plan that I saw, there was only one house in the back.
Yeah. So how would he file for a plan that, if it's changed, how he file the same plan if it's changed?
Well, keep in mind that, um, the lot, Mr. Hawks' house was on, is it existing?
Used to be on.
That's frontage on.
Yep, that was an existing, uh, nine hundred square feet, uh, house on two twenty-five, which was, uh, uh, we got the permits, uh, for the demolition about like, uh, a year ago, I'd say, one year and a half. Uh, we, uh, been through the process, so that's a existing, uh, thing, I think the subdivision was just, i- it's both property or it's just about the, the two twenty-three?
Well, the subdivision showed the two properties.
That was, that house was built, that house needed frontage, it needed subdivision approval.
Yeah, we were talking about the Hawks Hill Lane, yeah.
It was an existing house, it was torn down, that had existing frontage on.
That's correct.
Yep, uh, can I show you something?
You need to show the board there.
Yeah, no, I can show them, I just, you were talking about these?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all what I had from the, the.
This road was created, was created frontage for this lot, which was landlocked and had no frontage, so that a building permit could be issued. This one has frontage on Walnut, that's where the existing house was, you tore it down and now you're building under another building permit with frontage on Walnut. But this road needs to be built according to the approved plan, either way.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so the, the, the site plans from.
So talk to, yeah, you need to talk to the board.
This is the, this is the one that he's talking about, I'm gonna show you, uh, right now which, which one is the, the, I'll show you right now, the.
The front house and the back house.
Yeah, now I'll show you the updated one, that was, um, uh.
Do you have any plans of this?
Yep, yep, uh, it was, uh, Hayes, uh, Hayes did it accordingly to, uh, whatever was the request from, uh, planning board back a while ago, like saying exactly, in these documents that I just showed you, it has a paper saying, uh, uh, exactly, uh, the type of, uh, syringe, I, I get a syringe action pump because of, uh, gravity on the back, so which is right in front of my property. Uh, I had it all the, the documents, uh, from, uh, planning board saying that I, I should have no lights on the, on the, the private road, I should have the, the, the manholes, the drywall, this, this and that, it was built accordingly, and this is the.
So you came before the planning board when you bought the property?
I never did, I didn't know I had it too, I went to the town.
You sent the documents.
Yeah, I went to the, 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 the town sagas, I talked with them, and then we started the process of all the permitting. I wait, actually, I wait for, uh, probably six months until my, my plans go.
So you didn't go to the planning board, you went to, uh, the inspector, building inspector?
Yeah, 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 I had it everything done, all the plans are on the.
And those walls, all those walls?
Yeah, yeah, everything, everything on these plans right here, it's re, yeah, it's recorded on a.
Your plan doesn't show that back wall on the, on the sub, approved subdivision plan. That calls for a stone slope from the backyard house going down, there's no wall on those plans. It's, it's, you own it now, and so you understand that it's your duty to build it to the approved subdivision plans, and you haven't done so. You've just added a wall to the front of the house.
Yeah, but this, this one here was the one that was approved, my biggest issue was with the wall, I headed, uh, I headed, uh, my father is here, uh, so, we had it so much many, uh, meetings with Frank from Conservation, uh, he was the last one to kind of, I guided off, I had a problem with the wall, the, the previous one was designed, uh, inside of, uh, the, the, I mean, crossing the buffer zone, and, uh, and then, because I found out that, uh, the, the back of my property, the Conservation piece, uh, belongs to Lynn, not just Sagas, so I didn't wanna go through, uh, uh, the, the, what do they call?
Conservation commission, isn't it?
No, no, the, the, the notice of that. So I didn't wanna go through that, so I called, uh, the engineer, so he put the wall inside, I mean, out of the buffer zone.
Do we have any documentation?
Yeah, yeah, everything, everything.
You need a modification of the approved definitive subdivision.
Yeah, e- everything is.
You need to file for that, come back before this board, get their approval, before you can proceed with construction the rest of it.
So is this, what is this wall here on?
Oh, no, no, this is, uh.
This is on your property, right?
No, that belongs to two twenty-five, on the other side, that's a different permit.
Is two twenty-five your property?
No, no. My father's property.
It still falls under the subdivision?
Yes.
It's in the subdivision plan.
Okay, both of them, yeah.
To make these two lots, to divide them.
Okay.
So this is not on the subdivision plan at current, so you.
That one, okay.
This is not, the one that's in the backyard house is not.
Okay.
So this is why we need.
You're talking, okay, I, I got it now, it's, it's, yeah, I got it now, it's on the side plans for the construction, but it's not on the subdivision.
To the approved definitive subdivision plan, so we, the planning board needs an Asbilly plan with a red line of what's different out there right now than what was approved.
Okay, now, now I understand, now I understand exactly.
Needs to approve that, then you can talk about the extension.
Yeah, yeah, now I understand, I have on the side plans for the construction, but it's not on the subdivision plan that was, uh, approved back then on two thousand.
What you, what Mr. Hawks was bringing up.
You can't just make, you can't present plans, get them approved, and then change them without coming back to the board.
Okay, yeah, no, 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 I, I didn't know that, I didn't know, definitely didn't know, that was the first, uh, house that I, I did it, and it was for myself, so, uh, we are general contractors, but that, exactly the first, uh, new construction we ever did, we've been doing like, uh, remodeling, fuga, all that stuff, so I, that, that's why, I, I got Hayes, uh, they never, like, pointed anything to me if they knew about it, or when I got, uh, with the town, I went through all the, 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 the process with, uh, Dan, Frank, Michael, and then I wait for the plans to get, uh, uh, like, reviewed, if I'm not wrong, uh, as far as I know, when I, I submitted, uh, eleven copies of the plans, and one of them should be for the planning board, so.
Eleven copies for what?
For all the side plans, that whatever was done over there.
Who did you submit them to?
I submitted, this is just like a, a normal, a normal, uh, permit request.
So here's what you need, you need an approved modification.
One for the fire department?
Can I finish? We need to just kinda, I think, if I may of the board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Pleasure of the board, but I would recommend, as I said, we need a modification request, so you need to prepare an Asbilly plan, showing in red what is different from the approved subdivision plan that Mr. Hawks got. You need to show that, submit it, and we'll look at it, make sure it's in the proper form, and then you'll come back before the board to get approval for that. That's what you need to do.
No, no, I will, but I, I wanna point that in front of everybody, because, uh, when I came here first time, I was like, I, I, I was hoping someone from Hayes would show up, as I talked to Nancy, I was just like, with my hand tight, I, I'm not like, really being familiar, talking.
Did you reach out to them and ask them?
Yeah, in front of, yeah, they, uh, uh, the, Peter was supposed to be here, I think Peter is the owner as well of, uh, Hayes, so, they never showed up, what I don't understand is, I went through a process of almost two years of construction, I'm paying taxes already, I have everything done, I'm living on the house for nine months, and I'm sure my side plans, before we do anything with two twenty-five, two twenty-five was just like a lineup, the same way it was approved it by you guys, like on two thousand twenty or whatever.
Not us.
Yeah, no, no.
The house, building permit for the house.
No, no, not the house, I'm talking about the subdivision.
Definitive subdivision, you need to do what we've instructed you to do.
What I don't understand is why you guys are so aware of the construction wall and this and that.
Maybe it's when you build that monster house on a main street that we saw.
Why aren't you aware that you have to build a project according to your approved plans?
Without coming to the board?
No, no, I have the side plans, which is for the subdivision, you were saying.
Why didn't you build it that way?
It was built that way, that wall that is in front of.
All right, let's not keep rehashing this.
No, no, the wall that's in front of the two twenty-five right now.
You have a list of what you need to do?
It belonged to a new permit that was done like, uh, uh, two years ago, and then we can, uh.
Yeah, I understand what you're telling us, but what I'm telling you is that when you bought the property, there was an approved set of drawings that was submitted, and that's what was gonna be built there, you have now changed that.
So, Mr. Riley has outlined, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I just, in lieu of time, I just, we can't keep going back and forth with this, you've got your marching orders, you understand what you're to do?
I did, I did, I'm gonna do it.
And then.
I just wanted to answer why you guys are so aware, if, when I was doing the construction, you, you guys had it all, the, the, the new plans saying that the wall was gonna go there, why I never got a notice from the town?
We never had no plans.
Well, yeah, it goes for the planning board as well.
We're not the building inspector.
I submitted eleven, eleven sets of plans, one goes to the five.
Not to the planning board, I don't know who you, it, you sent them to, but the planning board is Nancy, that's not the same as going down to the building inspector and giving the building inspector something.
You have my plans, right? The, the side plans for Hayes' engineer, how the construction is right now. She does have, it's been there for almost two years, I've been talking to her, so, I, that's what I'm not understanding, it was approved it by you guys.
Something, you changed something that was not approved.
No, 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 you don't want to say.
Mr. Chair, I'd asked that the board take control.
If the change is the wall, that it's on, on two twenty-five right now.
We're, we're trying to help you, not hurt you, so if you would be kind enough to listen to Mr. Riley and the board members, what we're asking you is, number one, is, is to file for continuance, to ask, to ask the board to continue with the subdivision plan, you're asking for an extension.
Yeah.
So that's number one, number two, we're just trying to tell you that those are the rules and regulations to which you have to build by. If there's a change, you need to notify the board of the change, come in for a modification so that it can be approved, I don't know if this wall that you built is gonna obstruct traffic, we don't, all that gets taken.
No, I hadn't said, can I ask for one favor, uh, can I get, uh, the, the comments of what, exactly what you guys need, uh, on the emails, so I can.
First we need, first, before we go to.
To Peter, and then he can take all of it.
Before we even get to that step, what we need is you to come and ask for a continuance on the permit that was granted.
It's a modification request.
Then we need a modification.
That has not been submitted.
Right.
So we need a modification.
Right now we just have an extension request before the board.
That's all we have for tonight, was an extension request.
Okay.
Then you would have to show us a plan with all the modifications that are done.
But would we do that?
But I wouldn't do anything else on the property as far as modifying outside of the plan that was approved back in two thousand and five.
Okay, okay.
So you're, you're basically at risk if you do so.
Motion to deny the extension, um, and then, yeah, we'll get assistance from the town.
Does the petitioner know that he's got really one legal residence on that property? Because the plan collapsed.
I don't think he knows that, and I didn't wanna get into that, Bob.
No, I'm just saying, because looking at the plan of, of the planning board, it just still has that three B lot, but you know, the little pie-shaped piece, which can't be counted as part of the, uh, twenty thousand feet required.
He's been drawn that, he's been drawn that, you can throw that, you can ball it on the trash.
So where is the plan that shows twenty thousand square feet of that front lot?
I don't know, I think the chair might have it.
That's in the original subdivision.
Do we have that?
Mr. Hawks was supposed to stay in that home.
Yeah, but he.
And it's all changed since he's, he's done this.
We have that plan.
We have, I have it.
Now, does the front lot, this is the discussion we're in the board, does the front lot where the new house is have twenty thousand square feet?
Twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, two hundred fifty.
Not pounding this pie-shaped piece here.
Don't need that, that's part of it, don't, that don't go.
Get that plan, this, this, this is.
Yeah, that's the one.
It has twenty-two thousand square feet currently.
Mm-hmm, twenty-two, uh, two hundred five, forty-five, fifty-five, yes.
Okay, so the existing building is staying with the shed back here.
Actually, it's gonna be demolished, yeah, we already, uh, applying for, uh, demo, a permit.
Demolition?
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't keep on to my side, uh, we're just gonna demol, because it's gonna cost too much to kind of renovate the whole thing.
All right, so we're talking really this, the continuation of this plan here, do we have the signed plans that the prior planning board members actually signed?
I don't know if John has them there, I, this is.
Those plans have expired, but that was plan of record that was approved.
I'm just saying, can I more verify that this lot, where the new house is on the front, is exactly what's, was, what you're looking at, what I'm looking at, right here? The signed plans that the planning board signed at the time they approved this subdivision should have this lot just as, Larry will show me right here.
Do you have a copy of those plans, John?
I have the original two thousand and five, so that was submitted.
Is that the one signed by the planning board?
That's the one that's, that was approved.
This is just for the building from that.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry about my confusion, because now I understand what it is.
We'll help you.
This is a side plan for the construction, that one is for the subdivision, and it's not showing the wall and the stopdo was done, now I gotta do one of plans like that.
That's what they approved for the work to be done, if you changed all that.
Okay, now I understood, I, I wasn't understanding, what, what was it, 'cause I thought of the, the plans that you guys were looking for was this one, uh, that shows the, the property with the build out around.
So, Mr. Chair, do we need to make a motion, or is it just an advisement?
No, this is gonna be a motion, it's an idea.
You can keep the public hearing before the extension request. There's no harm in that, but I would deny, I take one step at a time. We need the modification request. And then get the extension.
It was twenty-two. If I look at the assessment information... Yeah, you've been with it. It's, uh, twenty-two. Yep.
Everybody's a man, just to give those extended.
Okay.
So that everybody knows.
Mm-hmm. It is, uh, it's, uh, twenty, twenty-two something with, with existing sheds still.
Okay, that's...
That'd be faster, don't you think?
I can throw this all one out.
Throw that out? Yeah, yeah, I guess so, yep. Get A and R plans, throw that out. Yeah, that one for the, was for the, the last time.
So Mr. Chair, a motion is deny the extension request filed before the board with the instruction to the applicant to submit a modification request by as-built with red line showing what has been built out there that was not part of the original approved subdivision plan.
Mm-hmm.
That's your...
Oh, twenty-two seven.
Almost.
Can I get a second?
This is extension, man.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion has been denied?
To deny.
You get a vote?
Yes, I...
Wait, what's the motion?
We already got it.
To deny the extension with instruction to the applicant to submit a request for modification to the approved subdivision plan by way of an as-built showing in red line what was built out there that wasn't on the original approved plan.
What are you looking for?
We're looking to approve what was built.
I mean, the original subdivision plan that was approved back when, twenty-two thousand square feet in the front and, uh, a required number of square feet in the back.
So for the record, there's been discussion tonight about a wall and some modifications that weren't on the original approved subdivision plan.
Oh, the wall wasn't...
We need, to be, to be legal, we need to have a modification request submitted, which is a standard procedure. And then that becomes plan of record, and everything's legal and upfront. And we know what, you know, is, is, has been built and what the town may or may not accept. But until we have that, we don't have a legal subdivision. So get that, and then we give them the extension decision.
I'm good to go.
So Vic, you have a vote, please?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, Nancy.
So the motion to suspend is passed five to zero. So right now, you do not, you've been denied, you don't have, uh, the right to continue?
No, we're gonna continue.
No, we'll, no, no, we'll continue the meeting, but to continue any type of construction until we get a modification, modified plan.
Okay.
We'll help you with that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay?
A motion to continue the public hearing? To win?
Second?
Well, how long do you think we, uh, what, what public hearing are we continuing?
We're gonna continue this public hearing.
You're gonna leave the public hearing open until it comes back with the modification.
The public hearing is for the extension request, and if we're denying the extension...
Oh, I thought you said leave the public hearing open so we don't have to oppose it.
But I would say procedurally, you should not have two things open at the same time like that.
Okay, all right, so then motion to close the public hearing.
So if you denied it, you've already closed the public hearing. So when the modification comes in that does not require a public hearing, I'll help you with this. It'll be quick. All we need is the as-built with this red line.
No, no, now I understood exactly what you were looking for.
Mr. Obrin knows how to prepare that.
Okay, yep.
And I'll help you with it, and we'll get you back for the board and get you on it.
Sounds good, sounds good. I appreciate it. Sorry about the confusion. I always, uh, I kind of mix it up, one type of plans with the subdivision plans on my head.
It can get, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want to come out with us tonight and do some live meeting and...
You lost me, uh, about an hour ago.
We have informal discussion.
That's it, you got it right there.
That's it, that's all.
Mr. Chair, I can tee this up a little bit so we...
Sure.
If you, if you, pleasure of the board.
Yep.
If you'd like to read it to the board. So this is an application that's been submitted to the planning board and, um, so it's to accept some, um, changes that have happened out on the site of Essex Landing that, that are alterations to the approved plans. It's just to get everything, um, you know, legal and, and like we've been talking about a little board and everybody's on the same page, so everything can proceed from here smoothly. So all that you're considering tonight is whether or not these changes are insignificant, minor, and you accept them if you sort of decide that, or they're major and that requires a public hearing, and then we'll talk about it a little bit.
This is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Richard Magnet in Office 194 Sutton Street here in Sagas. With me is one of the principal owners, Michael Tichet. Just to follow up on what Mr. Riley was pointing out, this was a, uh, application, or this is part of a, uh, application for a modification of a master plan and site plan approval of this project from many years ago, subsequent to a, uh, a major meeting at the town hall on or about February eighth, I think the chair was at present at that along with, uh, the vice chair. And subsequent, uh, Tetra Tech peer review comments regarding a multiple of issues to be addressed in a, uh, response. And then based on that response to the town, the need was to file this modification plan, uh, for master, uh, excuse me, master plan and, uh, site plan review. Under the, uh, board's rules, as you understand, uh, upon the submission of that, the board can determine that the changes are not significant enough to require a public hearing or are significant and should require a public hearing. And quite frankly, the applicant has, you know, no objection to this, which certainly should be viewed as, uh, requiring a, a public hearing. So that's all we're asking for.
So has the board members all had a chance to review? Mr. Long? Have you had a chance to review the plans?
Can I get an outline as to what the changes are?
You do as a, an incentive show...
There's been an application of a modification that, which contains the plan.
Yes.
And, uh, all the changes, uh, I don't know if the board, I would assume the board had, uh, copies of the peer review, uh, comments requesting certain changes and the, the applicant's response to that. And if not, we'll give it to you as part of the, uh, modification hearing, which really what we're here is asking...
Well, I don't believe the board has got that information.
Yes, well, we can get it too, yeah.
I'll have to check whether or not that should be part of the board's...
Yeah, um...
...proceedings?
I don't know if that's internal, yeah.
But, um, yeah, for the purposes of further deliberation, they submitted a complete application. It shows everything, and most of which is minor, some of which might need a little more understanding or discussion with the planning board. But we can do that in a public hearing and then get it, everything sorted out, which isn't everyone's interest.
All we're asking for is a public hearing.
Got you.
So you're looking for a motion to, um, instead of...
I'm looking for a motion for...
To determine that these changes are major, minor, and major requires public hearing. So I will make a motion to, unless anybody has further discussion, make the motion to, um, request that, to approve that these are major changes and it would require a public hearing and scheduling of a public hearing.
Right. Can I get a second? I'll second by Phil.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes. We have the application.
Tell me, tell me you weren't listening to that motion.
Would you repeat the motion, please?
We have the application, so we just need to...
We have, the motion is to determine that these are major changes, substantial changes, and they're gonna have a public hearing.
Yes. I go here.
Motion passes five to zero. We're suing public hearing.
Thank you, very pleasure.
Good night.
Good night.
I'll do the motion to...
Not yet. Mr. Serino has something he wanted to ask?
Zero to zero, thirty seconds left in the first. Do you have anything? No score, thirty seconds left in the first.
Mr. Serino, did you wanna say anything? No?
Yeah, it was an approved subdivision plan, yeah.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Amongst us, not that everybody's won.
Do you want to close the meeting?
Let me, um, hit, um, Larry, do you have a, for a second if I may? Uh, get Pam some, something she's requesting. She wants a copy of the original Hawk Hill, Tim Hawk, definitive subdivision plan.
Sign.
What the sign?
I have the originals here.
Could you make a copy?
I would have asked Larry if he could make a, make a couple of copies.
Yeah. And then I will do that.
Get them a lot with Chris's plans to scan it. It might be, it should be available at the registry of deeds.
It was never recorded at the registry.
They weren't recorded at the registry?
So I make that motion? Always doing...
Just, just one second.
I don't like to get my eye out of somebody, you know, you gotta...
Yes, oh, gone. Nancy, would you take note that I'm gonna surrender this set of plans to our originator?
Isn't it... You have two plans?
No, it's different.
These were the originals. There's never been anything changed from the originals.
Because I need your plan to scan as well.
Which plan?
Your, uh, next year walkway plan. We'll wait till they close the meeting and then I'll do it.
One second, we'll close it. I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to end the meeting.
End the meeting, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I get a second.
Is that your motion to second that?
All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.